Dr. Nead?
Yes.
May I add one other commendation?
Trustee Elaine, of course.
Uh, we got this a month ago, but it's been on my mind the whole time. Mrs. Selma Bilbrey passed away recently. She was a teacher in our district for fifty-two years. And that's amazing. It just shows you the quality of teachers that we have and the commitments that our teachers have. I'm assuming that part of those fifty-two years were maybe subbing, which she probably didn't have to do, but she came back to our schools for. And I think it deserves to be mentioned because it's just really an attestation. She's a living attestation of what education truly is. And we say that parents are the first teachers, and she is literally an example of that because she was the mother of Mrs. Carol Seisak in our district also. So, I just want to mention that I think fifty-two years of serving Dearborn students deserves a mention. I'm sorry for her passing, but her legacy is clear, so.
Legacy is in thousands of children.
In thousands of children who she served as a first-grade teacher.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I also have some recognitions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hot off the press.
I thought you were a second.
A follow-up to wrestling on Saturday. I had an amazing day on Saturday. Saturday, we had individual districts. And we had many of our wrestlers from all three high schools advance to regionals. I'd like to congratulate Fortson's Mohammed Zahwe, Mehdi Hazimi, Mujahid Ahmed, Asil Almudhala, and Ali Mackey. From Etzo Ford, Rafael Espinel, Omar Almedini, Ty Waika, and William Morano. And from Dearborn, Aaron Garcia. These wrestlers were advanced to regionals, and the top four in regionals will advance to the state finalists. We had two district champs, one from Fortson, Ali Mackey, and one from Etzo Ford, William Morano. William Morano also received his two-hundredth win on Saturday. Think about that. Two hundred wins in four years. And you heard his name earlier. He's an academic scholar.
Good.
And I know the family. Rob and Katie Morano are the perfect example of our parents in our district. I wish we had more parents like that, and it goes without saying. Parents are involved, students are successful. The most amazing match that I saw was this gentle giant from Etzo Ford, Rafael Espinel. He's a senior. He was losing, and at the last second, he could've got a takedown to win the match and advance to regional. So, good luck to all of our wrestlers. So, I left the wrestling mats, went home, took a shower, and put a monkey suit on. And only my daughter Zainab can get me to go to an orchestra, put a monkey suit on and go to an orchestra. It was the National Arab Orchestra. Women and Music was the theme, and I liked their mission, building bridges through music. I got there thinking orchestra, wow, excited, right? I think my daughter's here. I saw her earlier. But what a pleasant surprise to find out that the choir from Fortson was there. And they were part of, major part of the choir there, so they did a good job. I started asking some questions, and I did get some feedback from one of the employees at Fortson. Matt Laura, thank you very much. He's currently our choir teacher of Fortson High School. And since coming to Fortson in the fall of 2012, working with a handful of young ladies, in just four years, the choir program has grown to seven choirs and two-hundred-and-fifty singers, four years. That's amazing. So, thank you very much to one of our choir teachers, Matt Laura.
Trustee Hamood.
Just following up on that as well. And this is not the first time Fortson High School has performed, actually.
They found that out, too, yeah.
So, it's something to be, you know, something to be so proud of. But I also, when I saw the picture up there of the wrestling team, and I understand they have awesome coaches, one of my first cousins, Ali Mackey, who was a district champ, was just truly an example of the opportunities that the district offers students. He had come from overseas, started as an ELL student, and with the educational opportunities and the wrestling, he's really found himself, and I'm just so proud of him. And I know he'll be watching today, so I wanted to make sure that I mention his name as well, so. But congratulations to everyone, and so many things to be proud of, so.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Okay, next item, please.
Now, it's been donations.
Donations? Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
I was ahead of myself.
Too bad the donations aren't as long as the commendations. The following donations have been offered to the school district. Acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $2,050 has been offered to Eunice Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for robotics. A donation of $2,224 has been offered to Whitmore Bowles Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for projector, for projectors and, for a projector and a whiteboard. Since there's been two for the Dearborn Education Foundation, just a reminder that tomorrow is Mardi Gras, and the money that's raised at the Mardi Gras and the Dearborn Education events go towards these type of donations. A donation of $9,040 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs to be used to buy, to bring, used to bring Sonic Pie and the Detroit Chamber Winds and Strings to Fortson High School to work with the vocal music students. A donation of $200 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Health and Environmental Funders Network to be used for auditorium sound system. A donation of $175 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Health and Environmental Funders Network to be used for security cameras. A donation of $200 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by Blue Diamond Limousine Worldwide to be used for robotics. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action were signed in by 7:10. By submitting a blue card to the secretary, you may speak at this time. I don't have any blue cards.
Okay, next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee, January 8, 2016, Board Report 17-73. And regular P-12 meeting, January 8, 2017, Board Report 17-74. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved?
Support.
The date on this is...
Oh.
Yeah, 2017.
I'm motion.
I should've called there, yeah.
Is there a second?
Yes, I supported.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Whoops. Any discussion? Okay, pass unanimously. Next item, please.
Special reports. Due process, discipline, and complaints. Dr. Glenn Malakel.
So, we'll have Ms. Ali, the HR team is going to come up and provide a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Masam Ali Bazey, Executive Director for Staff and Student Services. This is Ms. Ruth Bankhead, our Director of Non-Instructional Human Resources, and Mr. Rob Cedarland, Director of Instructional HR as well. So, as part of our strategic plan, oh yeah, here we go, thanks, Rob. Part of our strategic plan correlates to evaluation and accountability, and the topics that we're going to briefly discuss today include due process, discipline process, complaints, and administrative leave, a few other related topics as well. In our strategic plan, these areas help the district meet not only legal requirements, but also the standards for individual and district accountability. It ensures that we meet those standards. And also our goals for retention of qualified and dedicated staff. By having these in place, specifically on the strategic plan, we have two action points that speak to this, that we will actively retain and recruit high-quality teacher candidates who will meet the needs of all learners, and that also includes non-instructional staff as well. Action point two is that the district will actively, oh, that is action point number two, non-instructional staff. So, there's a complaint process, a coaching process, due process, are all necessary to ensure that we have competent staff, that we have a safe workplace, that people are comfortable and able to, in environments where people are comfortable, they're able to thrive, and therefore, we can retain our staff.
So, I'm going to cover due process, which you could probably, if you've gone to law school, you may have had a whole semester on due process. There's a lot to it, but we're going to just deal with basically due process in an employment standpoint. Due process comes to us from, you know, the United States Constitution, the Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment are there to protect persons against life, against, be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. And employment standard, the lessons are a little bit lesser than the constitutional level. But due process is basically to provide rules and rights to the employees to make sure that the employer is following the rules as it goes through its investigative and disciplinary process. One of the primary rules of that is the employee's right to be represented, or the wine garden right. It can be very comforting. If an employee is facing discipline and is being questioned, they have a right to have either a union representative or fellow employee, if they're non-union employees, participate during the questioning and investigation process. We often go above and beyond. Sometimes witnesses will ask for a union representative to sit with them just as they're being questioned, even though they're not even the target of the investigation. We do advise employees in general that they do have the right to union representation when we are doing an investigation. Sometimes that can create a little anxiety because they want to know, well, why do I need to bring the union in? And sometimes, we don't know what we're going to find in an investigation. So, rather than get into an investigation and find a concern where an employee could be facing discipline, we kind of give them the upfront knowledge that they can have a union representative, and that's generally the wine garden rights. And then, as we proceed through the investigation and reach the point of discipline, then an employee has the right to know what they're being charged with, if a charge is coming down. They need to know the evidence that is being used against them, or the evidence that we've gathered to present those charges. And then, they get an opportunity to address those charges. They get the opportunity to tell their side of the story. And that all happens before we, as the employer, make any decision with regards to discipline. So, the employees have rights along the way, and we just want to make sure that the employees know their rights, so we advise them upfront. And then, as they're going through the process, we just make sure that they're aware how the process works.
So, for paid administrative leave, it's really important that we touch on this because oftentimes, it's so negatively perceived. And so, in the beginning of the investigation that Rob just spoke about, if there's any possibility that there is potential danger, there's someone that is irate, if it's an employee that's irate, or just severely emotionally charged at the moment, or there's an accusation that's made from, whether it's a student to an adult, or an adult to an adult, we use it cautiously, but anytime we think there's any potential danger, we do place staff on paid administrative leave. And what that means is that we have them leave the building immediately. We tell them, you are not in trouble. You're going home to protect you and to protect everybody else until we have time to investigate. So, it's just removing the employee for everyone's sake of everyone's protection. It's very negatively perceived, and it does have the potential to feed the rumor mill, which is a negative aspect of paid administrative leave. But we do our best to, anyone that that impacts, we do our best to say that you haven't been found, there hasn't been any wrongdoing determined. This is part of the investigation process. We have to ensure that you are safe and that everyone else is safe as well. And so, we continue to explain that.
The goal in any process is to correct inappropriate behavior as we go through the process. It's not to be punitive. You know, sometimes, it will advance to the stages where a punitive action of either a suspension, or possibly even discharge, does come into effect. But our goal in the disciplinary process is to correct, there's a lot of coaching involved. So, a lot of our corrective actions are more coaching and not formal discipline. In the standards of discipline, whenever you progress to the various levels, generally, an infraction would result in coaching. And then, it progresses a little bit farther down the road to maybe a written reprimand going, and the employee is filed, and then potentially going on to potentially have a suspension, and then eventually, it could lead to discharge. Very rarely do we come to that because we are proactive upfront by informing the employees of their wrongdoing and giving them an opportunity to correct their behavior. Yeah, and it's, one of the comments here is that it be timely, that discipline be timely, that it not lag on and on and on. So, when an infraction takes place, it's very important that we conduct the investigation at a very timely basis and reach a result so that these things don't drag on and on and on, especially when you're considering putting an employee off on paid administrative leave. We don't want them off the job any more than necessary. We do have discipline. Do you want to cover this, as far as the instructional teacher evaluation process?
So, for the discipline in terms of teacher evaluation process, there are three phases before, unless if it's some type of behavior and it's not anything that, what I'm going to speak about now is discipline related to teacher performance. So, it's overtime. It's performance in the classroom. And so, there's three phases. There's the awareness phase, which is a minimum of thirty days long. There's the assistance phase, which is usually sixty days, I'm sorry, more like ninety days. It's ninety days for assistance, and then thirty days for discipline. So, there's three phases, but the goal through each phase is to get the teacher back to Plan Two, which is effective performance. And so, the awareness is that you're coaching, you're letting them know there are some areas of concern in a formal manner. And we always try to make sure that our goal is to have all those conversations before anything becomes formal, so nobody's ever surprised. Nobody should ever be surprised that there are concerns about something in their performance. And then, we move through assistance phase, which tons and tons of assistance is provided throughout the year. And then, if things continue to lack improvement, then we move to discipline phase. Incident-based is the second area of discipline, so that would be coaching, verbal warning, written reprimand. It's about the employee's conduct. Employee misconduct, sorry. I think you covered that pretty well. And there you go, Ruth.
So, I'm going to do the complaint process, and the complaint process is if someone comes to me and says, you know, I want to talk about this person, I have an issue, our first question in Human Resources is, did you talk to that person? A lot of times, as we've said before, things can be dealt with if you deal with each other one-on-one. But if it's, if you've already done that, or it's a serious issue, then we want the person to come to Human Resources. Again, we do an investigation. The employee is put on paid administrative leave, not only to protect them, but to allow us to investigate freely to those we need to do. And the consequences issued are based on the conclusion of the investigation. We attempt to remedy issues whenever possible, and our goal is to ensure safe and respectful workplace for all individuals.
I just want to give an example of the complaint process, in that we really do our best to respect the chain of command. And so, for example, as a principal, it wasn't uncommon that a parent would come to the principal, especially a parent you had a great rapport with, and they would have a complaint about a teacher. And so, the response is always, have you spoken to the teacher? Have you let the teacher know that you have some concerns about A, B, or C? If the parent says, no, I've never talked to the teacher because I don't want them to take it out on my kid, we would encourage, you know, it's really important that you have that conversation directly with the teacher first. If they say, I already talked to the teacher, and I'm still not happy, and things are still not improving, then as an administrator, I would say, let me sit in the meeting with you. And I would still try to take more of a facilitation, building understanding role in the meeting. And honestly, like nine times out of ten, you can resolve the majority of issues that surface through the dialogue of let's work out what the concerns are. And it's usually, everyone has a different perception and a different part to the story. You get everyone together, and you work through it. Same thing at, if it was a secretary that was upset with their administrator, and they call Ruth, or they email Ruth, and they say, you know, I'm upset about my administrator for whatever reason, Ruth's first response would be, did you have a conversation with your administrator and let them know that this is an issue, or this is something that's bothering? Did you give them an opportunity to improve the situation? The only time that, the only time that I would say, I would encourage it to go directly to Human Resources is if it's anything, anywhere remotely possibly involving sexual harassment or sexual misconduct. And Title IX is not anything new. Title IX has been around for a while. I'm happy to say that all of our administrators received Title IX training in September, and we're working on rolling out for all staff Title IX training program that they'll earn a badge with some of our other required training for all staff. And so, Title IX is the Education Amendments of 1972. It's a federal civil, sorry, civil rights law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in any education program or activity that receives federal funding. Now, when we look at Title IX, it could include sexual harassment, rape, sexual assault involving staff or students. All staff is responsible for reporting potential sexual harassment or misconduct. And so, just recently, I did send a message out to the entire district that basically gave an overview of this, and it said, see it, say it. That's what I had in that. See it, hear it, say it. Because sometimes, you hear things and you don't see them, and it's just a rumor, that we don't dismiss just rumors when it has to do with anything that could be a form of sexual misconduct or inappropriate sexual behavior. Reporting practices of, like what to do, that with, in the past, a lot of times, and if you're watching the news, obviously, you've seen the landscape that's in the media right now, and it's definitely something that we take utmost serious, and we, and that's oftentimes, if there's an allegation, we do have to put someone on paid administrative leave. But we assure them, it's an allegation, it hasn't been proven, you're not being put on paid administrative leave because we think you're guilty, but it's because we have to take things serious and conduct a thorough investigation. Ongoing communication resources and training is essential for Title IX. So, we, all stakeholders will continue to hear a lot about Title IX.
And there, it's always the potential that some disciplinary action could reach the board level, whether that's a tenure hearing, or a tenure issue, or an employee that's being discharged, and we're asking the board to vote on that discharge because the employee hasn't accepted the consequences and decided to resign. Whenever, whenever there is an investigation done by the board, or an action that comes to the board, it's always important to remember that the board has to offer that employee the opportunity to meet in closed session, and it's always the employee's right to request a closed session so that they can be heard in closed session. The Open Meetings Act obviously has rules. You can't vote on that case in closed session, but you can discuss and deliberate and have your hearing in closed session. And that's just to respect the rights of the employee so that they don't have information shared throughout the public on their employment relationship with the district.
The employee could also ask for an open session.
They can, they can, yeah.
Questions? Trustee Hamood.
Is there an appeals process for discipline? So, for example, would that, is that something that could potentially come to the board? I know the discharge can come to the board, but how about discipline?
It will vary based on bargaining group. Obviously, in a tenure case, tenure cases always have to come to the board because of the employee's tenure rights. If an employee is non-renewed, so they're not a tenured employee yet, but they're going through the process, that is something that would, the board would have to vote on if the board, or if the employee wants their due process right to present to the board, or recommendations going to the board for a non-renewal. In the case of our support staff, they have a grievance procedures and grievance processes that allow them to appeal up to an arbitration, and eventually, they can come to the board. I think different unions have different rights.
The DFSE, excuse me, the DFSE goes straight to an arbitrator after the superintendent's level of a grievance. If the grievance is found not to be valid, then the union and the employee have the right to go to a state mediator.
And in terms of a teacher evaluation, I know you have the three stages, the awareness, the assistance, and the discipline. Is there, for example, a time on that? What's the duration of the...
It really varies. The guidelines of the teacher evaluation program say thirty days for awareness, ninety days for assistance, with at least three meetings, but there's usually way more than three meetings. It's thirty days, thirty days, thirty days, and then discipline is thirty days. Those are the minimum timeframes. So, it's, and then, at any point, an administrator can say, you know what, since we had that awareness meeting, I've already started to see some improvement. I don't want to move this person to assistance phase because I am seeing them implement what we talk about, or I'm seeing the right attitude to want to change and improve in the areas that we brought to their attention. So, it varies. There have been cases where somebody has been on the assistance phase for six months because they're getting assistance, they're showing improvement in those areas, and the administrator feels that they're showing consistent improvement. That's usually the key, is that it's consistent improvement, not just one day yes, one day no, one day yes. So, it varies, but typically, thirty days is minimum, ninety days, and then thirty days again.
And then, thank you. And then, one last thing, Masam, I truly appreciated your email with the see, hear it, say it. You know, we can no longer kind of brush these issues under the carpet. But I do have a question, and I assume the answer is yes, but also in terms of substitute teachers that come into our buildings and so on, do they receive the Title IX training as well?
Well, that's an excellent question. So, Ruth oversees PESG, so I'll see if you know the answer to that, but now that you've said it, if they don't, we'll make sure that we provide it.
And unfortunately, they don't, only because we give PESG the training, we want them to have their employees do, and Title IX, we need to add with the updates. So, whoever's going to get the new contract because the bid is up for substitutes, they will get it.
We'll make sure that that's included.
Right. They will get it, and they'll have to sign off that they did it, et cetera.
Thank you.
Correct.
Trustee.
Trustee Barry.
It was mentioned earlier, thank you, thank you, Thomas Chair. It was mentioned earlier that if a parent comes forward with a complaint about a teacher, and they're afraid, if they, they don't want to go back to the teacher and talk to her or him because they might, you know, may feel, and it's, sometimes it's real. I see it sometimes, not with teachers, sometimes with coaches, that the coach is going to retaliate against their student. Do we have options in the district, how we deal with something like that, if the parent does not want to approach the coach or the teacher? Now, with that being said, I know we have professional teachers and professional coaches. That's not going to happen, but if the parent feels that way, what do we do there?
It's one of the most challenging situations to be in, and I can think of, I swear to you, I can even think of the student, where I had ongoing, as an administrator, actually, I was at Fortson at the time, ongoing communication with the parent, and I was doing my best as the administrator to be able to personally see firsthand, so then I could address what the parent was describing to me. It's really difficult because what happens if an administrator goes in there? Now, you can have, like, you know, an informal conversation with the teacher, which is what I would try to do, but then, you never want it to become he said, she said, without both people being able to sit in the room and talk it out directly, because then you become the middle man, and no one's happy with you. Now, you've upset the teacher because you don't have faith in them, and then you've upset the parent because the parent doesn't ever get to hear what the teacher's perspective is on the issue. So, it is difficult when the parent decides that they do not want it addressed. As an administrator, I can tell you, I was, I would always try to find other ways to address it whenever possible. So, it's a tough spot.
And just a follow-up question. When an employee has a complaint and is afraid coming forward because of the same issue, do we have a process internally?
Part of our investigative process does involve a certain amount of protection to the employees with regards to disclosing information that doesn't need to be disclosed. And so, we try, if Human Resources is getting involved, then we try to keep that confidence level out there. But if it results in a disciplinary charge against somebody, we have to provide a certain amount of evidence. And sometimes, it's difficult to protect, you know, to say, well, we've got witnesses, but we're not going to tell you who they are, or we're not going to tell you how we found out about what it is. And so, in fairness to someone that's facing a charge, we're more likely to disclose certain information than if we're just doing an investigation and trying to be more problem-solving.
Sure.
And a lot of our investigations result in problem-solving rather than in the formal discipline.
Sure, thank you.
Trustee Thorpe.
I was really glad to see in the complaint process that one of the first things you do is try to get the two parties together to... do is try to get the two parties together to talk, whether it's between two employees in the district, or like you mentioned, between a parent and a staff member, or we do the same thing with the students with restorative practices. I'm just glad to see a consistency across the district with the principal.
Yeah. Problems are generally solved where they exist. So calling the superintendent's office, saying, "I'm mad at this teacher," the superintendent's are going to throw it back down the chain of command, and we're going to try to solve those problems where they exist. Human Resources can't come in and solve the conflict between a parent and a teacher. You know, that, that really needs to be worked out between those two, or eventually to get the principal involved as a, as a mediator, or someone to settle. Human Resources usually gets involved in the more serious cases in which we're dealing with, you know, serious infractions where someone's going to either be suspended, or, or they've progressed along the disciplinary chain, and we, we get more involved because it's more likely to be a severe consequence.
So I just appreciate the HR team, and a lot of you know that my background was from HR prior to becoming superintendent. I just want to mention, too, that in, appreciate the presentation questions, you know, safety being number one of students, and that's why, glad you talked about administrative leave and what it is. We're not saying it's to protect. But also with our unions, we work very well, I know some of our union heads here, and we believe in fairness. Fairness to all, and I think that's important. We respect our employees, and that's why we want to make sure that we're following the process. So even with evaluation, the goal is to improve and to be fair to employees, because we have great employees in this district that go above and beyond, highly, you know, we heard at the beginning of the meeting, some of the things that are going on in our district. But when necessary, we have Human Resources there. And, you know, I, we did think that the Title IX was important to bring out right now. And that's why we wanted to get it out there. And everyone knows now, any kind of inkling or rumor, it actually goes through Human Resources. Mason were one of them. All the administrators have been directed, they must report it, even, you know, just so it can be looked into. It can't just be, and there's, there's reporting requirements and other things. So I wanted to mention that. The second, the third thing I just want to mention, you talked about the complaint process, and that happens to me a lot sometimes. Sometimes it's not even necessarily, it could be a parent complaint against employer, whatever. And the email goes to me. So what I do is, I find out that it hasn't even gone to the principal yet. So what I do is, when they send it to me, I actually send it right back to the principal and the executive director in that school to get them to look at it, to go back and kind of look at the situation, because they're closer to it. Could be lots of things. I think the board sometimes gets these things. And so what we have to do is make sure we go down the process, because for me, I may not be aware of the specific thing. Now, obviously, if it's a more serious situation, then that's different. Get it right to HR, and we handle it. But sometimes it might be more minor complaints and things, and really, it is in the best interest, because I could tell you the principals and the teachers, they want to solve it, too, and they might not know. So we've got to give them an opportunity. So just for the public and parents to know that, that's what I'll do, is if you get, you know, and I, I get this every now and then. We have a large district, 21,000 students, 2,800 employees. We're going to be fair to our employees. We're going to protect the interests of our students. But again, we want people to follow the process. Coming right to me is not going to expedite per se, because it's still going to go back down to the level to investigate what it may be, which usually is between the teacher and the principal initially. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I thank the work of HR. They, not only busy with this every now and then, but also the hiring. And I want to thank our union heads, who I think we work very collaboratively, and we, we all stand for fairness. I think they know that about us, that we really want fairness for employees.
Now we have to just get our new DFSE president to let me text him. Said, "Hey, if you want communication, I have to be able to text."
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Any items?
I just have a question about number seven.
Okay.
I have a question about number six and seven, and then number 10 doesn't really, it's a meeting, it's not a closed meeting, it doesn't, I just want to point it out.
I don't understand. What do you mean?
Well, I mean, we'd have to have a roll call if it were a closed meeting.
Oh, but we don't.
But number 14, I'd like to make a comment on, too.
None of them are going to get pulled, then?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not pulling any.
16, thank you. Okay. At this time, recommended action. Move that action items numbered one through 16 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Oh, yeah.
We need to go to questions about seven and six.
Questions?
Do you want to start first with your question?
Well, my question is, is this, first of all, I want to thank Superintendent Malaco, and I'd like to make an editorial comment. So this is the sound system and curtains at Edsel Ford and at Fortson. And to me, this is an example of infrastructure. We all know we've been underfunding infrastructure in our country, and in our district, and in our state, for years. We don't have to have a new sound system at Fortson or Edsel Ford. But frankly, it's terribly embarrassing when you have a donor come to a school, and nobody can understand what's being said on the mic. It's terrible. Same thing at graduation. We're at Edsel Ford. The mic gets cut during one of the speeches one time. So this is not critical, but it's infrastructure, and we've been underfunding these things. So thank you for getting this done, Superintendent Malaco. We were all terribly embarrassed. And my question is, when is Dearborn? So we have the curtains here for Fortson and Edsel, and is Dearborn coming up?
I believe, Mr. Ghrzinski, is Dearborn on the slate? They were completed, right?
They were done.
Oh, they were done. Okay. All right. So that answers the question.
And in return, thank you to the board for the encouragement to get it done, too.
After Dr. Brem's visit to Fortson.
Yeah, that was, that was bad. That was bad.
And I, can I just mention, too, on that, you know, as we have different things, as we get into these old buildings, these are kind of the budget decisions that we have to make moving forward, especially, you know, what happened, the reality a decade ago with all the tough times that you all remember, is that a lot of these things did get cut out of the budget, including curriculum materials and other things that we're trying to revamp now. So appreciate you, the commentary and support.
And my question is probably going to have to be answered by Mr. Wall, specifically about, I mean, I, I want to make sure that we're getting quality when we're doing this, because we're hoping that both the sound system and whatever else we, we replace is going to last a number of years. But there is a significant difference in costs in the bid for the curtains, and I'm not sure why that is between the bidder who was awarded and the other two bids. Are, A, are, is it the same quality of product, even though it's a different amount, and is it, or is it some, in some way, a whole different structure of, I mean, are they all just curtains, or?
Yeah, and it's apples to apples. It's the same curtain.
The exact same curtain?
Exact, we, we didn't give them a choice on, on the grade of curtains.
On the prod, okay.
Right. We wanted a fire-resistant curtain that would last a little bit longer.
And so what is, what is this on, because Edsel has two different, and we took the higher price range. What is this alternate?
The teachers were concerned about the acoustics.
Okay.
For the non-amplified musical settings. So that would be to, we felt there was too much reverberation in the Edsel Ford auditorium, and the curtains was actually a way of decreasing the reverberation.
Kind of muffling? Okay.
Exactly. But they were concerned.
So it's additional curtaining, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's going to go on the sides and the back to help dampen.
So, so that was going to go to my next question, then. The staff who works with it was consulted with what we were putting in?
Correct. That's why we left it as an alternate, because if, in the end, they decide they don't want it, we can pull it out.
Pull it out. Okay. All right. That answers my question.
Things get complicated bad.
And the staff were very excited also to see this work being done also.
I was questioned about the Fortson sound system and curtains just last week. And I said, "Jeez, I think we're voting on that, or we already did." I knew I had seen it. So I'm glad, I'm glad I didn't mislead anybody.
Part of the curtains that we did order are synthetic and inherently fire-resistant. So it actually, by ordering those curtains, it decreases our maintenance cost over time, because we don't have to maintain them.
You mean, nobody's going in there and scrubbing them?
No. But if you have cloth curtains, you have to get them re-sprayed and fire-rated every so many years. So we eliminate that process.
Very good. Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
I fully support the sound system at Edsel Ford and Fortson, very much needed. But I know a couple of months ago, when we initiated the discussion, we also talked about Salina and Stout. Where do we stand there?
Yeah, Mr. Ghrzinski, I think, is.
That's our next round. We'll be visiting the middle schools, and if they prioritize that as, as something that their school would like to move forward with, then we'd bring those costs back to Tom and the executive directors to make sure that, that's something that everybody agreed we should move forward with.
Yeah, there was a couple of times where we're at Stout, and the microphone was caught off and on. One of the, one of the times, Mr. Mishur was speaking, so that wasn't a bad thing, but.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, we were, we were pretty pleased with the pricing we got on the sound system.
That's when we want the muffling curtains.
For the high schools.
And we're upgrading the sound, which was on a previous, but the sound system in here, not for the board meetings, but when we have presentations, you know, we host a lot, we have a lot of training in this room, so that's getting upgraded with the, that the board had already approved that a while back, so.
Okay. Thank you.
For number 14?
Okay.
Could I just say that I'd like to congratulate the nine students who are graduating, who graduated in January. There's only nine of them, but nine students matter, and it's fabulous. Our graduation rate in this district is something that we really have worked on, and I'm really glad to see those students graduating. So congratulations to them and best wishes.
Yeah. So there is a motion, correct? And it has been seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous. Pass.
Okay. Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval and award to Highland Bus Company for four Bluebird buses. Number three, approval of the increase of the annual contract with Trinity Group. Number four, approval of an award to Prestidio Holding Incorporated. Number five, approval of change orders. Number six, approval and award to KLA in accordance with the sealed bid number 1343. Number seven, approval of an award to North Coast and the Princesses with sealed bid number 1344. Number eight through 11, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P through 12. Number 12, approval of financial statement. Number 13, approval of board study session on March 1, 2018. Number 14, approval of recognition of January graduates. Number 15, approval of endorsement of MASB Board of Education Governance Standards. And number 16, approval of donations.
Next item, please.
Discussion items. A, policy updates.
You guys are going to get tired of me.
No, never.
Thank you. So the policy, board policy committee has met the last few months, and the three policies that we'd like to discuss today in hopes of voting on them in March include Policy 5600, which is student discipline, 5610.01, permanent expulsion. And the other one we discussed, but it's actually a guideline, was 5610, suspension and expulsion. So it was 5610, which was the guideline, and then 5600, which was the policy. The school revised code law just recently changed, and as part of those changes, it, you know, when the law changed, it brought to our attention that we needed to look at our policy, make sure that our policy was aligned with the, the law. And what was included, which, what is new to the policies in all three of these areas, are the seven factors. And they actually, it's not new to consider the seven factors in discipline. It's new that it's required for them to be stated in the guidelines or the policy. Just to give you an example of what the seven factors are, the student's age, the student's discipline history, whether the student is a student with a disability, the seriousness of the violation or behavior committed, whether the violation or behavior committed by the student threatened the safety of any student and/or staff member, whether the district plans to use restorative practices to address the violation or behavior, and whether lesser intervention would probably address the violation or behavior. So those seven factors we consider as part of our discipline practice and process already. And the second to last one, the one about does, whether or not the district plans to use restorative practices, very proud to say that when I read that, I was like, "We are on the cutting edge of restorative practices." And while it's not in all of our buildings yet, it's like a wildfire spreading, because it's highly effective measure for discipline and for changing behaviors. It fosters positive behaviors. It fosters conflict resolution. And several of our staff members and administrators have already been through the complete restorative practice training. So to specifically state the seven factors, and then also whether or not the district plans to include restorative practices. And restorative practices is referenced in a few other areas as well. And so when the law changed, it was our, our legal guidance gave us, the legal guidance we received was that we should be including that in the actual policy.
When, when you talk about one, one of the seven factors is the seriousness of the behavior. Do we have something that's going to, because to one person, something is extremely serious. To another person, they might think, eh, you know, why are you, you know? So the gradation of that, how are we going to determine that? Who's the final judge on what that is? Do we, are we going to have that included in the policy somewhere, or?
I'll have, I'll have, Mr. Mishur, our student, Director of Student Services, respond to that.
Okay. So the seriousness depends on the level of the offense. So if it's a level, it has to be a level three offense. Level three offenses would include things like assaults as opposed to fighting. Level three offenses would be drugs in school, that type of thing. So are they all defined? No, they can, they can't possibly give you a list of everything, but they give you some egregious acts, and then you just have to see if, you know, whatever offense occurred, if that fits in under one of those.
Okay.
Accused of a weapon, I think, was.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Am I finished here?
No, Steve.
But the, but the determination would be by Student Services?
Correct, yes. And the building administration, through their investigation, would, would come to determination as to how serious the offense was.
And what was nice about going through this policy was that we were already implementing it.
Good.
The district was already implementing restorative practices and so on. We just kind of took what the law said and added it, even though we were already doing it. So.
Could you move your microphone closer to you, please?
Is that better?
Thank you. Yes, Trustee E. Thorp.
Okay. I had a question on the Policy 5600. It states that data regarding disciplinary actions may be entered on a student's record when such notation can be used to assist counselors. All such information shall be removed from the student's permanent record before he or she leaves this district. So my question is, is that something that's in our policy, or does that come down from the state?
That is in our policy also, is something that the state encourages us to. The state doesn't give us a, a mandate that we have to include that, but it's, it's what they, it's a best practice that's been used for years.
So I'm thinking of situations where a student will be leaving our district to go to another district, right when they are in the middle of a process for some type of discipline. This then makes me believe that we're not sharing what's going on with that new district, and they might be accepting a student that normally they might not want to.
But they have to. The only way they don't have to is if the child is actually expelled. Then they do not have to.
So we could have a student coming into our district from another district with, because of a serious offense, and we can't know about it or do anything about it?
No, we can't do anything about it. We have to allow the student to enroll in our schools if they live within our boundaries, unless they've been expelled. So if they were in an expulsion-type hearing, then we would just meet with them. We would look into the hearing, the situation, call the other school, and get whatever information we can get before making a decision.
And you're then saying that this is something that we're required to do?
Correct.
That this would have to go really back to the state, if we want to say that we are not interested in taking a student that has a serious violation. I know innocent till proven guilty.
Right.
But as a parent, you don't really want that person coming into your child's classroom if they've got. if they've got that situation.
Very valid point, but like you said, it's innocent until proven guilty, so in a sense, if they haven't been expelled, they haven't really had, technically had their day in court.
And sometimes that's by choice.
And that's not something that the district decides. The district doesn't say, "We don't want to look into your background, you can just come in." We are, this is by law.
This is by law.
And we would be violating law if we don't accept someone that is within our boundaries.
Correct, if we deny someone that's living, residing within our boundaries, and they have not been expelled from school, then we're technically breaking the law.
Do some people get away with things? All the time.
Absolutely.
But that's why this has to be a collective effort, to make sure that safety of our students is first, and to monitor those.
Well, that's why this is a state issue.
Yeah, it is.
And that's where I understood, Trustee Thorpe's question was going, is people trying to circumvent?
Circumvent the law, or beat the law.
Right.
I have one question. It has to do with a student coming to the schools with a gun, and, and we expel them? And isn't it the case that sometimes those are exactly the students that return and shoot people? How do we protect ourselves when we expel somebody, because they have been with a big knife or with a gun? How do we protect ourselves? Just sending them away doesn't seem to be a solution.
Definitely not a solution, it's a deterrent, if you will, makes them less accessible, that type of thing, but at the same time, yes, if somebody's, you know, motive is to come in and shoot up the school, it's, you know, and it's difficult to stop.
Is a person like that, are the police informed about a person being?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
We do have a reinstatement process for anyone that is expelled, and it's usually, it's different for different age levels, but it could be 180 days, and so, from Mr. Misher's office, if there was a hearing, and then it reached the board level, and the student was expelled, there could be things in place that say, if you go to counseling, and we have evidence of counseling over this much time, if you, if your parents commit to, give me some ideas here, what are some of the things that we?
Counseling.
Counseling is a big one.
And then continuing their education while they're out of school.
Community service.
Somehow, somewhere.
Community service, thank you.
Community service, yeah.
So, that would be an opportunity for a student to return to school, and so hopefully, that's a piece that offers some type of hope, that you're expelled and you can never return. Now, of course, it would be a board decision, if it was something as serious as a gun.
Trustee Hamud.
And just to follow up on your question as well, I think that the district has done a tremendous job, when it comes to solving things within, without getting the police involved, for the best interest of our students, when, you know, if it's something that could be solved, but I think every single situation that we do consider serious, and we've seen that within our district, especially if it's something that, you know, where a gun is involved, or a weapon is involved, that we've built a good relationship with Dearborn Police, and almost all the time, when a situation like that, the school makes the call, and we do have, you know, our resource officers, police officers come to our schools, and that relationship is definitely there, and they are aware, but you can never control what people are going to do.
Could I just, could I just add to Trustee Hamud's comment? That's the one thing that we really value, our close relationship with Chief Haddad and the police, and the SRO officers, so most of the time, when you're saying, well, how do we protect safety, it's because we do work so collaboratively with them, and so a lot of times, what might happen, and we take every threat as a viable threat, even though it may not be, so what happens is, we get on top of it even prior to a student usually coming to school, and I know the board is aware, if a situation had occurred, even if it was just, you know, we've talked about this at the board level, when people putting stuff out on social media, and be watching what you say, well, we're going to investigate that, and someone's going to have a visit to their house, so normally, as, safety being number one, and I want to remind everyone, we were rated, just over a year ago, as one of the safest districts in the tri-county area, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Misher's team and the principals do, but we make safety number one, and we're trying to head things off, and a lot of times, we thank the students for bringing those to our attention, because then we can intervene, and that has happened, and, and again, normally, I'm just going to be, normally, it's not a viable threat, but we take all threats seriously, and we spend time, and we're going to ensure that it's looked into, you know, for the sake of our students.
Trustee Lane.
Well, I remember us being in expulsion hearings, when we've told students, "You will not return to school," and most students are really, really, I mean, they want to be in school, once, once they realize that they, they don't have that option anymore, and, and I think the school, I mean, the school administration knows about that as well, and, you know, sure, I, I know that some of the driver behind weapons is for rural districts that maybe don't have a police department, I was just on Oakwood Boulevard the other day, and I saw like eight to 10 Dearborn cops fly down the street, I said, "What's this, Trump must be here or something." It was an accident, you know, it, the response time here is, is amazing, and we have a prosecutor in our county, who will take action and enforce the laws, so our best protection, in my mind, is the Dearborn Police, our, our cooperation with the city and county authorities, and...
And the relationships at the building level, which Dr. Malaco touched on, that's how we know, that's how our administrators know what's happening before it happens, is because their relationships with the kids, and kids, majority of kids want to do the right thing, the majority of the time, and so they usually, it, somebody will usually speak up, and then now with social media, that's a whole nother informant.
I guess what I'm saying is that sending a student away, who has been caught with guns, sending them away is not necessarily a solution, unless we work with what you're saying, with everybody involved in the city, et cetera. Don't want them coming back.
We sure don't, yeah.
Hurt people, hurt people, as you know, so we try to manage as much as we can.
Hurt people, hurt people, right.
Any other discussion? Thank you.